Good evening. Welcome to the November 16, 2016 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. At this time, I have a request that you, that everyone please turn off their phones or any electronic devices and then stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Applications heard during tonight's meeting will be voted on by the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Commission will then make a recommendation on the applications, which will be submitted to the St. Charles County Council for their final decision. The individual items and bills for this evening's applications are scheduled to be introduced at the Monday, December 5, 2016 County Council meeting. The following documents are introduced as a matter of record for this evening's public hearing and regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The unified development ordinance of St. Charles County, including zoning maps. The year 2025 master plan for St. Charles County, which includes the year 2025 future land use plan map. Can I get a motion to open the meeting, please?
No moves.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We do have one item that we need to take off the table tonight, so I'm gonna go ahead and do that now. If I could get a motion to remove zoning conditional use permit CUR 16-05 from the...
Second.
And all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna give you a little roadmap on how the meeting goes for the audience. We read the application into record. We then ask the staff for some recommendations on it and their analysis of it. After they've done that, we have a chance to ask questions of the staff. Usually the Commission asks questions during that time, too. At that point, we ask the applicant to come up and present the application to us. We have an opportunity to ask questions of them at that time also. Once they've submitted and presented and we're done questioning them, we then open it up to the public. Anybody in the room that wants to speak on one of these matters has an opportunity to do so. I do request that you fill out a speaker's card if you're gonna speak and to please keep your comments to about three minutes. So you need to be prepared to kinda go through what it is you're for or against, and we let people for or against, too. At that point, we will close the public hearing, we'll bring the applicant back up. They have an opportunity to try to answer any of the concerns or any of the questions that might have come up during that time. Then we close the meeting completely. The Council, this Commission, has discussed it and takes a vote on that item. Regardless of the vote that happens, this, these items will go before the County Council, and that's on December 5th. So you also have an opportunity to go out to the County Council meeting and present your case there. They have to present, and it gets voted on twice at the County Council meeting. That, the first one's on December 5th, so just kinda keep that in mind. Okay, let's go ahead and get started. First application for tonight's meeting is RZ 16-14. The applicant is Rocky Morgan. The property owner is Big Hill LLC. The current zoning is A agricultural district, and the requested zoning is RR single-family residential district, three-acre minimum lot size. The area is 21.13 acres. The location is on the west side of Highway Y, approximately 1,675 feet south of Mack Lane, and it's in Council District 1. Staff?
Thank you. The subject property and the adjacent properties are all zoned A agricultural, and the future land use plan does show this area to remain A agricultural. The surrounding land uses include, to the north and east, single-family residences on like three to five-acre lots. To the south and west are agricultural properties. The staff has reviewed the application for the rezoning from A agricultural to RR single-family residential with the three-acre minimum lot size, and we find the proposed zoning is appropriate for the area. There are multiple properties in the area that are three to six acres in size, and this would be in keeping with those. The 2025 land use plan, it does call for agricultural, however, the area is located in a transition area and it's less than a half-mile from St. Paul. So staff is recommending approval. Before they could develop the property, they would need to submit a subdivision plot to be reviewed by staff and the Commission. We did receive letters, an opposition letter from Roseanne Fizey, written protests from Anthony and Carrie Ockley, David Kenobi, Elizabeth Dyer, Jim and Corey Osterloth, Matthew and Jill Fisher, Robert, I'm sorry, Robin and Matthew Horsmeyer, Gary and Sheri Dyer, and then before you tonight, you have a lot diagram of how they, they're thinking they'll make the lots come out, and then the survey of the property. Any questions of staff?
I was out there yesterday and today looking around, and could you point out some three-acre lots? They were all big lots, houses set down, but it's a beautiful place there. And I looked and I thought, which lot, when I read your thing, which one's three acres?
If you look up, I don't know if you can see...
I've got your map here.
Okay, like 501 and 507, Highway Y, 601 and 602, they're on, I think, Evergreen Terrace. 1720 is probably a smaller lot, and...
1720 is the only one that abuts this parcel?
Well, 602, Evergreen Terrace does, and then 601's in front of it along Y, and then 501 and 507 are on the curve.
How did he handle that? I didn't see that one when I went out.
Probably 1670.
602.
And I'm sorry, I can't get to the mapping website tonight to pull them out and confirm them for you, but...
I'm looking at the wrong one. Oh. Do you think those were existing prior to the 2025 land use plan?
Oh, yeah. They, well, right now, the agricultural district has a five-acre minimum, and it, but it's only been, it's been a five-acre minimum just since 2006.
Okay, so those existed prior to that zoning?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause we didn't have any rezonings in this area.
Gotcha. Any other questions of staff? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring the applicant up. Raise your right hand for me, please. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And state your name and address for the record.
Rocky Morgan. I live at 115 Kindred Hill in St. Peters.
Okay, go ahead, Rocky.
We were, we purchased the property with the idea of we were gonna put five families there. Two of the families are two of my sons, two of my nephews, and a very good friend. They're all young professional people, raising children, and we thought it would be a great sight. Nothing's less than three and a half acres. It goes up to 4.2 or 4.3 acres, I think's what it is. With the homes around it, the lots around it, we thought it would be a good fit. I am the, recently retired as a Director of the Building Department here at the county. So I oversaw a lot of those homes being built on that area, and I did the approval on the houses. So I know the area, it's a beautiful area, it's a great place to raise kids and build homes. It's nice and quiet, and that's why we did it, and that's what we're looking to do. We're not trying to make enemies of anyone, and I, there's a tree line around most of the property that kinda secludes you from those homes there.
Sure.
And I think now that development is starting back up, I think we're gonna find more potential lot sizes wanting to come in. This is zone agricultural, but it's sitting amongst those homes, you can see that. So we thought it'd be a good idea and a nice drive coming in.
Okay. Any questions for Rocky? Go ahead.
What are your plans for the runoff?
Right now, the runoff is...
It comes on somebody else's farm.
Oh, it does. It comes down, it's a sheet drain. There's nothing, as I've told people in the past, the water's going where it's going, okay? All we can do is put grass and put vegetation to slow down the runoff and don't damage someone else's property. The worst thing we could do as a builder or as a director is let them take the water and confine the water to damage someone's property. But if you keep it as a sheet drain, as is now, it's not gonna change the flow of water.
It's not gonna change it when you're building roofs and roads, there's gonna be more runoff than there is now.
Well, right now...
And you're not gonna put a retention basin in either?
We hadn't planned on a retention basin, but although, right now, it's a farm field.
I know, but it's...
Water runs off. And when you put grass in it down, you're gonna have more retention naturally, the grasses. There's a lot of the water that runs down alongside the drive coming in to the county road, to the ditch. There's a drainage on each side of the driveway coming in, and quite a bit of it runs that direction now, which, you know, we don't want it to go anywhere else, that's where we want it to continue to go. And the lots are laid out where the houses are not gonna be built up high, 'cause the lots are kinda crowned at the as they are now. So it really lays out nice for homes.
But the existing property owner's gonna get your water.
You know, I'd have to go out there during a heavy rain, see the water's going now?
But something that you should do before you build one.
Oh, before, we would set an elevation on a house. We would go out, but the houses are not gonna be in the backside. These lots are big enough, the houses are gonna be probably 100 feet from the center. That's what we talked about.
So there's gonna runoff.
Well, yeah, we're gonna, you're gonna have some roof. The houses, talking to all the boys that want to build, they're looking at a ranch, some story and a half. The ranch, we're looking at maybe 17, 18 square feet. We're not looking, we're not looking at building great big houses on this thing. Nobody's, nobody's wanting to do that.
It'll have a two-car garage on it.
Oh, yeah, two-car garage.
And way, too. You're gonna have streets going in there, you gotta get to the point.
Well, we're gonna have gravel roads first. I mean, there's gonna be a while before you collect enough money to rent the asphalt thing. Someday, we'll be asphalt, but if it does, that asphalt's still coming down the driveway to each side of the drainage that's there now. There's a berm on the east side protecting those houses below it, and the waters come around that berm, comes down to the drive. And we intend on leaving that berm there, 'cause there's trees in that berm also. So, I mean, that would be foolish to remove that.
What about septic tanks?
It'll have to be septic. It'll have to be septic tanks. I mean, I'm, I'm a licensed wastewater person in Missouri, personally, and septic tanks, depending upon the soils, will determine what type of tank we have to have. Alternative system versus a general gravity-fed system. But, I mean, we'll do the soil samples, get the testing, and if it's, if it's bad soils, I have to get an engineer, and that's what we've always required, and that's what I always required. If we're doing three-bedroom homes, normally you're looking at 500, 600 feet of field, which is a standard system today. There's nobody looking to build a four- or five-bedroom home. None of them are looking to do that. They are all young professionals with degree jobs, they're all professional people, but nobody's wanting to build a great big house because they have to pay taxes on it. So they're all gonna have to go well. We have talked to the gas company about possibly bringing gas up there. Gas is supposed to be down on Mack Road in Y, and we, my son Trey, he called the gas company, and they gave us an estimate of what it'd take to bring natural gas up there versus having bottled gas. So, I mean, that's an all, an option we're gonna look at, and if the cost is what they're saying, we'll probably do that, which is gonna allow gas for the other people along Highway Y, 'cause we're gonna pay for it to come down Y. So, I mean, it's, it's one of those things you're gonna weigh out. Go all-electric, bottled gas, or natural gas? And right now, everybody we're talking to, the guys that are wanting to build right away, are leaning toward putting natural gas in.
Any other questions for, go ahead.
Yeah, Rocky, in case this does not pass tonight, what would your plans be with your 21.13 acres?
Sell it?
Sell it.
I can't, you know, we, we had a guy put beans in it this year. He had farmed it last year, and I don't know if the years before, if this guy had done it, I'm not sure, but the revenue wealth of beans, or corn, or whatever you might wanna grow, would not pay your interest on this land. I mean, we did not steal the land, but we didn't overpay for it, I don't think, not for housing. But, no, if, if it gets turned down and we can't build houses, we'll have to put a per sale sign on it. Thank you.
Any other questions for Rocky?
There's just no way you would do four lots on it.
Economics, and then we're gonna have to, if we do the four, we're gonna have to put in easement through somebody's lot to get the road up through there. I'm trying to stay away from easements, 'cause we're trying to do through someone's lot. There was five of us involved in it to build homes, and the five were all excited about it. I mean, I've seen a lot of homes go up in three acres, these are all over three-acre lots. There's, there's five of the 11 lots around there that are less than five acres now. So I thought it fit in real nice. I really didn't anticipate any, any problems with the size of the lots, with the five of them there.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we're gonna go ahead and close this portion of it, so thank you.
Okay.
And we'll call you back up in a little bit.
Thanks.
We're gonna go ahead and open up the public, and anybody in the room that wants to speak on this matter, for or against, can do so now. Try to keep your comments to three minutes and try not to repeat the same things over and over, 'cause we wanna bring the applicant up and be able to answer any questions. So if you've got new stuff to talk about, it's fine, come up and talk. So whoever wants to come up first, come on up. Make sure you fill out a speaker card. Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And state your name and address for the record, please.
Tony Ockley, 1610 Highway Y.
Go ahead, Tony.
So my house is 1610, it's hard to see on that picture there, but the bottom...
Yeah, we got it here.
The left there, yeah. So we just built recently, and we, we actually just moved in two months ago. We abided by the five-acre minimum. And then, when they bought the property, he said they knew they were gonna do five houses, which he knew the zoning. So I think that's a pretty bold strategy, just to go ahead and say, we're gonna buy it, and if we can't push it through, we're gonna go ahead and just sell it. So that, that strikes me. And then all the other houses, they all drained Highway Y. I mean, that's a landlocked piece of property. There's nowhere for that water to go except onto someone else's, where even some of the smaller lots around Y, there are very few, they drained the main road ditch, to where we're there at there. All that water, there's, there's no water control structure they're gonna put in or anything like that, it's gotta go somewhere. To where my lot is, I actually have a terrace running below our house that brings our water to our easement coming down the middle of the field, and then goes to the main Highway Y ditch there. Those are my main concerns about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't...
Tony, hold on.
Yeah.
Where is your lot located? What's the number?
1610.
She'll point to it. You can stand with it, stand with the podium, Tony.
Right there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody else wants to come up and speak on this? Come on up, or I'm, okay. Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Matt Fisher, address is 1620 Highway Y.
Go ahead, Matt.
Excuse me, I'm a little nervous, and it's a little weird for me, too, because I actually know a couple of these guys, so it's kinda put me in a bind.
Relax.
But, I'm sorry?
Relax.
Okay, thank you. I guess my concerns would be when they're actually planning on moving forward, and when, when it actually would get rezoned, 'cause right now, it's just a plan. We just moved in in June, and that was a big reason why we moved out there, is for the five-acre minimums. We wanted to get out in the country, right? So we knew that 20-plus acres over there could always be four houses, but I get the letter in the mail that's asking for three-acre mans on 21.13 acres, and I'm picturing seven three-acre lots. So, multiple people involved. I talked with a couple of the guys about this, you know, things can happen, you know? What if it gets rezoned and the plan changes? I knew there could be four houses over there, but technically, if it gets rezoned, then it gets put up for sale, somebody could buy it and put up seven three-acre lots. Am I right or wrong on that?
Well, they would have to submit a plumery plat to us.
But it would already be rezoned. It wouldn't be like Plan A didn't go through, so it reverts back to being zoned as it is.
That's correct.
I mean, when these guys bought this, honest to God, I was, I was ecstatic, that it was someone that I knew. And I hope, I hope it goes through, and I wanna see them over there, I really do. I just, that, that's one of my biggest concerns, if it's sitting there for a year or two, I don't know what their, their plans are as far as rolling something out, something happens, somebody needs to get out, or when you need to make, make some money off of it, possibly, you know, what happens then?
Okay. You guys have any questions for Matt?
Can I make a clarification?
Yes.
Okay, when someone does a subdivision plot, if it's 21 acres, all 21 acres do not end up in lots, because they have to put, they have to set away, set aside land for right-of-way. Right-of-way has to be 42 feet wide, they're gonna have to have a cul-de-sac in there, so all of that takes away from those lot numbers.
Okay.
So they, there is no way someone could get seven lots on that property. Five is probably the maximum that can be done with a subdivision plot.
Okay.
And also on stormwater, the county ordinances do not require, well, there's, the differential runoff between a farm field and a three-acre lot subdivision is not enough runoff to require stormwater improvements. So I just want everyone to be aware of that.
And I guess, real quickly, too, before I'm done, if I'm not taking too much time, I guess another concern would be, I know we're saying that, that this property abuts up to other three-acre lots, so is this just starting a domino effect out there, like, okay, here's some more three-acre lots, the next guy, here's some more three-acre lots? When does that turn into asking for one-acre lots? I mean, again, that's a big reason why we, why we moved out there. You know, we spent, my wife and I spent a lot of time, up to this past June, we moved in, saving, paying things off, you know, getting things in order so, so we could make it happen, so, okay?
Just the, the, could never be smaller than three-acre lots.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't know that.
Because of the septic, St. Charles County has some of the most restrictive septic tank requirements or private sewage disposal requirements in the, in the country. I mean, there's parts of this state where you can go in, and a majority of the state with one acre, you can put in a septic system, while this county is three acres.
Okay.
So unless somebody brings in, unless sewers come in from somewhere, there won't be anything less than three acres.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, David.
Sorry, he wants to come up.
That's great.
It's okay.
Awesome.
Might be up first.
Hi, my name is Robin Horsmeyer.
Hold on, sorry. Raise your right hand.
Sorry.
You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And state your name and address for the record.
My name's Robin Horsmeyer, and I'm at 1600 Highway Y.
Go ahead, Robin.
And our, our property is on the corner there, right at the first corner. We have 8.9 acres. We bought that property four and a, four years, four years and two months ago. Like Matt had said, we saved our money. My husband and I are both agriculture professionals, and we, our dream was to live in St. Paul in that area. We're not from this area, but we, we bought the property after saving a lot of money and building our dream house that we're gonna live in forever. And our sons, this is my son Brody, and my son Bryant's here, we feel strongly that we moved there because we want to give our children agriculture. We both grew up on farms, not eight acres, but in St. Charles County, that's a lot. And so we're real proud of our property, we're proud of our neighbors and our neighborhood, and we wanna protect that area from becoming three-acre lots. We want the five-acre standard area that's in St. Charles County. We know from building, the sewer runoff, or if you haven't been out there in our area, it's beautiful, very rolling hills, and runoff is a major issue that we're really concerned about. So we would like to protect our property, our neighborhood, and our future of our sons, and Matt and I plan to live there the rest of our lives, so this is very important to us.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Anybody else in the room wants to speak on this? Come on up. And don't forget to fill out a speaker's card, too, please. Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And state your name and address for the record.
Jim Osterholdt, I'm at 2660 Fremouth Road, so I'm just west of the property. And I, I just wanna say, you know, I, I know a couple of the guys, too, that are gonna be there, and a lot of the same reasons why they wanna build out there is the reason why we're there. We wanna keep it five acres on a minimum, and I think we're a little worried about the precedent that could set for the next person that has, say, 22 acres, and can they do the same thing and it goes down to three acres? I sit, where I sit right there, I'm, I'm right around 21 acres, it's a family farm, and we, we had to build on five acres at that time. We just don't wanna set a precedent of, like Matt had said, you go from three acres, then is the next guy wanna go down to two acres, and the next guy down to one, and then we're gonna, and then we're gonna be at a subdivision where Tom Hughes has built them, so...
Yeah, so we, and David kinda addressed that, they can't do that out there, 'cause you don't have sewers, so, and it's very unlikely you're ever gonna get them out there.
Okay.
And it's, it's a chance, of course, but...
Sure.
Just wanted to let you know.
Okay. That's, I just wanna vote my opposition on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Anybody else in the room? Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And state your name and address for the record.
Kevin Kurtz, at 602 Evergreen Terrace. So my property is just to the direct north of the proposed property, and the only concern that, that I have is that, is water runoff, and I know the gentleman addressed it earlier, but if you go out there during a torrential downpour, literally, the backyard, my neighbors' in my backyard is almost a big lake. My driveway's washed out twice this year, and it's probably washed out a half a dozen times since we moved there in 09. So my concern would be the rudder, the water runoff on the, on the west, northwest corner of the property, going down from our front, or into our front yard, and then draining into the neighbor's yard, which ultimately has to go through our yard to get to the creek. I, I think it's a, it's not, I don't think it's an impossible thing to take care of, but my concern would be it not being addressed ahead of time, and then having the issues after the fact, and then trying to get something addressed without it being on record that we talked about it.
So if he were to keep it to four, five acres, then he'd be able to...
Well, I'm, I'm torn, I live on four acres, but it, the, the way I understand it, my neighbor in front had bought seven acres and divided it back in the day when you could do that. So I'd be a hypocrite to stand up here and say that they should have to have five acres. I like the idea of five acres, and that's part of the reason that we were drawn to the area, was the size of the lots, but I also understand that there's some neighbors that have three acres, so that's not, that's not a concern with me.
It's just the water.
It's, yeah, it's the water issue.
And you have that problem now, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
But I, I don't know the, I mean, it's not just that property that's causing the problem, I mean, but if, if the, if the topography is changed to, to a point where it adds more water to it, then, you know, we've got more issues than we've had in the past, and, and, you know, then trying to fix something after the fact seems to be a lot harder than to take care of the issue prior to. And I don't know how you would do that, other than say that we're gonna contain what water's, you know, on there to be contained now, you know? We're not gonna add to your problem, but I don't know how you can, somebody can say that without, you know, without the end product of seeing if that truly, you know, if that truly took place and truly happened. But that's just a concern that we have.
Okay. Any questions for Kevin?
Have you ever had anybody look at your drainage problem, see what was causing it?
Well, it's just the water, it's just the hillside, I mean, it's just the way that the, you know, it, it's the way that the land lays.
So you're at the bottom of the hill?
No, I'm at the top of the hill. But, oh, well, my property goes to, I have a 20-foot rise from our property line in the front up to the driveway, up to the garage. So it's, we're 20 feet higher at the, at the top toward the back of the lot, as we are at the front, where the water, you know, I, I drive over a culvert about 50 feet into our property line, so that water drains from all of those houses on the west.
Just a comment with the flooding, if Mr. Morgan wasn't doing this, and somebody owned it, and they put four houses on their, on five acres, you'd still have the drainage
owned it, and they put four houses on there, on five acres, you'd still have the drainage problem?
Absolutely, yeah. No, I, it, like I said, I'm not, I don't have an issue with them subdividing it, and I don't, and I don't want to say that I have an issue with it being less than five acres, but my, my concern is altering the topography of the, of the land, and to, and to ensure that that wouldn't happen to create more water runoff for us.
Okay. So we'll get him up here and talk about that for.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Anybody else in the room want to speak on this matter? If not, I'm going to close the public portion, and we're going to go ahead and bring the So Rocky, you heard a couple of their concerns? Can you address any of them?
Well, the, the water runoff is an issue everywhere. We, we fight that every time we, we put a shovel in the ground. I cannot redirect the water away from their houses. We can only sheet drain and try to control the amount of runoff by having grass versus soil with all the sedimentation running through the yards as they're getting out. As the gentleman spoke, he's getting runoff from three or four lots above him. You know, I can't think about that one. Right now, I must say it looks like better than half of the drainage is coming down alongside of our driveway coming in. So are we planning on changing the contours and out of the ground? No. No, we can't. When you put a septic field in, you can't disturb the soil. So I mean, you have to work with the elevations you have, you can't disturb the dirt, move dirt around, and put a septic field in. You can't do it. So you got to leave things alone. So that right there tells you you can't disturb your lot in, in many areas. You got to have a field you're using, plus a backup area for a field when this one goes bad. So you can't just go in there and start taking a bulldozer and working three-and-a-half-acre lot and pushing dirt everywhere. And that's the first thing I will tell developers when they come in, don't start moving dirt and tearing trees out because we got to have places for the septic fields. You know, leave it all natural, fit the house in there somehow the best you can, but don't start scraping dirt and grass. And that's no different here. We can't go out there and start scraping dirt and grass. We're going to have to work with what we have. There's no, you know, whether, if I put one house on there, we're going to have the water runoff anyway. I can't, I can't contain the water. If I'd contained it in a pond, I don't know where I'd develop, where would I dump it? You know, it'd have to go into somebody's yard or property. So, I mean, a pond is not an answer. Sheet draining is the answer, because then I'm not destroying someone's property by containing the water and funneling it and channeling it. So, and, and I, you know, I, I watched the two new houses go up. In fact, I used to have the permits for them, the Dyer family, great family. I grew up in Old Fallon, St. Paul, been here all my life. I've known their names. Nice houses. What is going to be built here is going to be complementary to the homes that are there. I have nothing against what they're saying. They have the right to not be happy with whatever's going on around. Everybody would like to have nothing done, and, but to do that, you got to buy it. I mean, I live in Cave Springs. Koenig's Orchards was behind me when I built my house. Well, in Cave Springs. Man, I should have bought that land, because now it's houses. It was beautiful orchards when I built, back in 83, but, you know, it is what it is. And I, and I deal with that too. So everything changes.
So they're asking about when you're going to start too? What's your timeframe?
We've got plans, well, there's two guys right now that have talked to an architect about their plans. They're not finished. We weren't going to go too far until we got this all approved.
Sure.
But there's two of them that are serious about getting started as soon as we can. The third one says he wants to get started next year. And then now I find out a fourth one says, hey, they want to get started possibly late next year, or in 2018. So, you know, there's.
So your plans is start pretty quickly?
Yeah, they got, they got ideas. These, these guys want to get their houses built, and they're all good friends. And like one gentleman said, you know, they, they know each other, you know? So there's, there's no animosity here, it's.
Okay.
I, you know, if, if I had, if I had the ground they had, I could give each of my kids five acres for a house, I'd do it. That'd be great. I don't have it. So we're, we're going, we're trying to do the best we can. We have no intention on selling this ground once we get it approved. No. That's not an intent, but.
Any other questions for Rocky, guys? Okay, I think we've pretty much done what we can on this, so you can have a seat. We're going to discuss it up here. Do you guys have any questions for staff you want to discuss a little bit? Any concerns? What's your thoughts?
I have some.
Well, go ahead, you first. I've been on this commission longer than anybody else, and I sat here for years, and you said it happened in '06. I was on many years before that, and we told so many people, you got to have five acres. It was just in there. They brought up that RR, and it was a general feeling in the commission that we, we should be very judicious in passing that out. And we did very little. There were some that I remember, I got seven or eight acres and two kids, and I want to split it in two so I can both have a house in front of my house. Kind of special events. It wasn't just automatic, and we were very concerned for a period of years, like this is just going to be automatic. Especially when you got farm ground, you're looking at St. Charles County, we had the big farms, are they going to be just clopped up and, and put in three-acre things? So we have to be very careful in giving out these three-acre things. I like that. The county would look better, especially these neighborhoods out there, if you all had big five-acre lots. And that's my thought. In my own personal situation, I bought three acres, I came in for a permit, couldn't get one, I had to go back, borrow some more money, and go to the farmer and say, for me to build a house, I got to have more acreage. And he said, well, you can have the rest of that field, and he sold that to me. So it happened directly to me. Now I think, what if somebody came just next, and said, after I went through that trouble and built my place, and it's down here in the woods, are we going to give them three acres and they can put a house down here? It shouldn't be automatic. Shouldn't be automatic at all.
Okay, thank you.
I don't.
Go ahead, Mr..
Okay. Okay, I, I grappled with this too, because three acres is not real high density, so I, as I, as I went through this, I, I thought, okay, the long-term calls for the agricultural zoning. So I went back, and I looked at the zoning and statement of intent, and the statement of intent on agricultural, I'm going to just paraphrase it, but basically the intent is to keep it as an agricultural type of use, are-related uses to discourage premature and dissociated urban development. Now, the statement of intent on residential is to provide, the intent is for districts to provide detached, single-family residential developments. And I do think that, for instance, in areas where you have a farm broken up that's in a highly densely populated area like the Koenig, highest and best use and market demand determined the, the use change. Here, this is a, a, more or less an agricultural area, and I don't see the, the forces of supply and demand, nor the particular reason to change highest and best use. So that's where I.
Mr. Hammond?
Well, I, when they came up with the five acres, I, I never really understood where they were going, especially when you're looking at an area like this. I think you're cutting off your nose despite your face not to get a development like this at this time. Because I guarantee you, 10, 15, 20 years down the road, this growth is going to move that direction. It's coming. So the more that you get properties developed in three, I mean, the smallest lot they got here is three-and-a-half acres. I don't know if I can even look at a lot, one three-and-a-half, and one five acres, and tell the difference between the two. So for you to think that development's not coming this way, you got your head stuck in the sand, because it's going to come someday, and it's going to come sooner than you think. So I would better have, if it was me, I'd rather have a development like this, that I know I'm going to have that open area closer to my house, instead of a subdivision with 5,000 square foot lots or 10,000 square foot lots.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I look at this, and there's, this, from the aerial map, it's surrounded by at least 18 to 20 homes. This, if we left it, it'd be a hole in a doughnut. And so you might as well close this hole up, because it's surrounded by residential homes now, not being used for basically agricultural purposes. It's not like we're tacking on to the end and we're starting to keep progressing in one direction or the other. This is filling in the hole.
And like I had my terms again, but it will be residential, but a three-acre, a five-acre, and the big part of the zoning board that's not written in the code is it's our job to say, how does this fit together? Yeah, there will be development. Who knows, St. Charles County might just go, they got a lot of floodplains, so not all of it's going to develop down there, but when we put this together, whether we put a Kmart on the corner or a gas station area that's stapled all night, we have to say, what does that do to the neighborhood? And how does this fit into the neighborhood? And that's my concern.
Got it. Any other comments? I'm seeing none, I need a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Griffin, you're going to get a second?
Second.
Mr. Hammond? Mr. Setley?
No.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Cleary?
No.
Mr. Leonard?
Abstain.
Mr. Fromm votes yes. Mr. Coon?
Yes.
And Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
And Dave Hammond?
Yes.
Seven, two, and one, so it passes. Again, you guys have a chance to go before the county council, and don't forget to go to that, and that's on December the 5th, okay? Thank you. Yeah. I'll give you guys a couple of minutes to clear. Yeah. Okay. Okay, so you take it to the county council and tell them all that. Don't forget to comment though, please go up there and do it. You only get three people for that too, just so you know. All right, thank you. So our next, if we would bring that, change it on the screen, please. Thank you. The next one is rezoning RZ 16-15. The applicant owner is Robert R. Rigazzi Jr. and Catherine R. Rigazzi. Current zoning is RR, single-family residential district, three-acre minimum lot size, and it's requested zoning of A agricultural district. The area is 9.05 acres, it's on the east side of Jackson Oaks Court, approximately 1,300 feet north of Jackson Road. It's in Council District 2. Staff?
Okay, this is, the subject property was rezoned RR in 2007. They rezoned it to split it at that time, and sold the property to the people who own it now. They wish to have animals on the property, so they need to rezone it to ag. Staff has, is recommending approval of the ag zoning.
Okay. Thank you. Is the applicant in the room? You want to come out and speak on it? Okay. You want to raise your right hand, you swear to tell the truth and nothing about the truth?
I do.
And state your name and address for the record?
Robert Rigazzi at 18 Jackson Oaks Court.
Go ahead, Robert. I think you got a pretty slam dunk here, so I don't know if you need to talk too much about it.
I mean, if, was anybody out there, like, how you drove down to any of the guy's place?
Yeah, I think you're okay. I'm just saying.
All right. Because I mean, we're not, we're not wanting to do any type of commercial swine. What it is is, we, once we found, once we found out we were residential, because everybody else that surrounds us is agricultural, everywhere around us, we're, we're big into 4/8, and we found out, being residential, you can only have four animals.
Okay.
And I worked for the city of St. Peters, and my boss said, you better do something, because we don't want to see you on the news, being an animal hoarder, having a couple of turkeys and a couple of chickens for 4/8, because surely you're going to make it on there.
Thank you.
And I wanted, I wanted to make sure everything's straight and legal, and on, I don't want any surprises or trailers showing up.
Okay.
Taking my little girl's chickens away. So, because you guys will have to explain that, I'll, I'll go hide. But I mean, that's it, I'm not, nothing else is going to change.
Robert, you're fine. Is there any questions for Robert, guys? You're good. Go ahead and have a seat.
Thanks, thank you for talking.
We're going to open this up to the public, I don't think there's anybody in here who wants to speak on this. So we're going to close that and bring it back before the commission. I guess we can get a motion on this one.
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Griffin? Mr. Cleary, seconds? Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Cleary?
Yes.
Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Fromm votes yes. Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
And Mr. Setley?
Yes.
Good, nothing. Okay, that one passes. Thank you. Our next application is rezoning and a CUP CUR 16-05. The applicant, current purchaser is Nick Hall Kennels. The property owner is Susan J. Sheppeman, and the current zoning is PR FF Park Recreational District with a floodway fringe overlay district. Requested zoning, A FF Agricultural District with a floodway fringe overlay district. The requested use is a kennel, the area is 10 acres, and it's on the west side of Highway 94 South, approximately 700 feet south of Highway F, and it's in Council District 2. Staff?
Okay, the subject property was zoned park, well, actually recreational back in, actually, it was probably in the early 60s that it was rezoned that, can't remember the history on it, I didn't live here at the time, but anyway, they, they didn't develop it with whatever recreational use. The recreation district did allow single-family residences until 1999. In 1999, when we changed the Unified Development Ordinance, the PR district no longer permitted residences. So that's why there's currently residents on the property, and, and it doesn't meet the zoning district. And the current request is to put a kennel on the property, and a kennel is, is a conditional use in both the residential districts and the ag district, being that the surrounding area is mostly agricultural. We decide that they're best off going into the agricultural district with the CUP for the kennel. So staff is recommending in favor of, of that request. The future land use plan shows the property in the agritourism area. The, the size of the property doesn't meet the agritourism zoning district, which is a 40-acre minimum. So staff is recommending approval of the agricultural zoning district relative to the kennel. You do have a, a site plan showing the development of the property. We, we tabled this last month because staff was concerned about the size of the property and if the, the kennel operation could meet the setbacks, so they've submitted the plan showing that it does meet the setbacks. So staff is recommending approval of the kennel. I mean, obviously, this is on a busy area of Highway 94, so we're recommending approval subject to the following conditions. A site plan must be approved by the Community Development Department in conformance with Unified Development Ordinance, Section 405.525. A certificate of occupancy from the Building and Code Enforcement Division must be obtained for the business. A kennel operator's license is required by the St. Charles County Community Health and Environment Department for compliance with regulations. Number four, unless an animal is actively being worked with, all animals shall be kept inside a fully enclosed building between the hours of 6:00 PM and 7:00 AM. And number five, further expansion of the use from the site plan submitted will require approval of the governing body. And I apologize, we didn't have our, we didn't have our two standard conditions on here, so we'll add those. I'm sure I can't remember those verbatim, but I read them every month when we have a conditional use permit. conditional use permit. The condition where if it's not, that the use can't be on the property until the conditional use permit is approved and plans are approved. And also that if, if the use does not start on the property within two years, then the conditional use permit goes away. So I would ask that you add those two conditions to the staff report. Any questions of staff? Oh, I'm sorry, letters?
Letters, yeah.
I think we had one. And we have a letter in support from Lawrence Crane, an opposition letter from Harold and Cheryl Horsmeyer, a written protest by Marty Meyer, written protest by Cheryl Ashby Basler, a letter from the representative about the existing proposed plans, and then we had an anonymous letter in opposition to the kennel. Any questions of staff?
Seeing none, let's go ahead and bring the applicant up. Are you both going to present?
Good evening. I'm David Schmidt, attorney that represents Mr. Hall.
Okay. All right, raise your right hands. You swear to tell the truth and nothing about the truth?
Yes, sir.
And state your names and address for the record, please? Both of you?
David Schmidt, attorney at law.
And your address?
423 Woodlawn Avenue in O'Fallon.
Okay.
2547 South Highway 94. And my name's Nick Hall.
Okay. Go ahead, gentlemen.
Nick lives on the property. There's a residence in the back portion of the 10 acres. The portion that abuts along Highway 94, there are some existing buildings that Nick started to use for housing some of his animals. Nick stumbled into, for a hobby, working with dogs and training them. That hobby has kind of grown for him, and therefore he's got to the point where he'd like to make it a going business for him. He was able to speak with the property owner and has fortunately been able to work out a purchase arrangement for this property, and he'd like to remove the existing older structures that are along the highway and build a better facility for the animals. The facility he's planning on building is a metal structure. It will be insulated so that any noise from the animals from the interior of the building will not be able to come outside of the building. Most of his work with the animals is done on a one or two animal basis during the day. Most of the animals are held inside. Nick's specialty in training, he's not building a kennel just to house family dogs. His specialty is working with animals and doing training of them. He trains, telling the type of animals you train.
Lot of waterfowl retrievers. Main thing is a lot of police dogs, narcotics dogs, PTSD dogs, different type of service veterans dogs. Some of the guys have literally no legs and one arm, and this dog does almost everything for them. So a lot of things like that. So these dogs are trained for such a long time, it's not like they're coming for two nights, they're uncomfortable, barking for three days. These dogs are here, they're going to be with me for three, six months, a year at a time. They become what we call residents. They, they know the rules. They will be, and plus will also be at a signed proof room or house, so...
How many dogs are we talking?
No more than 30.
Okay.
And I do want to apologize, our site plan has evolved over since the time we originally filed the application. We had some contractual obligations in order and had to speed up the filing process for this, and so our site plan, the formal one, was just submitted, I think, was it yesterday that it was sent in? So, but we do have that before you. I don't know if you've had an opportunity to look at it. We have a poster of it shown here, if you'd like to see it.
Put it up on that, we'll put it up on that easel if you want, right there in the front.
We do have a copy.
We do have, that's okay, I mean, it's up here. Any other questions, guys? For them?
Do you use the light in the back for training?
Excuse me?
Do you use the light that's in the back for training?
Not much, not a lot, some, but not, not daily. No, and I know there's been some things about gunshots and stuff like that, and it's not a day-to-day where we would train with firearms. If you get a dog comes in and they say this dog's gunshot, of course I've got to shoot blanks or, I mean, you've got to get used to it, right? But it's not an everyday thing by any means.
Any other questions for them? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close this portion. Thanks for coming up, and see if there's anyone in the room that wants to speak on this matter. Looking like there isn't, we'll go ahead and close the public portion of it also and bring it back before the commission.
I can speak before, and I drive by the place thousands of times, but I think it's a good use for that corner property.
Okay, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Ellis? Mr. Hammond, thank you. Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Cleary?
Yes.
Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Fromm votes yes. Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Setley?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
10, nothing, that passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Is there any other business before us that we need to do, other than the minutes? Seeing none, I need a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved.